Good evening. The Board will now reconvene in open session at 6:04 PM on Tuesday, November 13, 2018, in the Plano ISD Administration Building in room 311. I am Ms. Evander, President of the Plano ISD Board of Trustees. On the Board's behalf, I wish to extend a warm welcome to all who are present and to our web and video viewers. We will conduct our meeting focusing on the district's two major ongoing goals: ensure continued improvement in student learning and ensure efficient use of financial resources and budgeting. Let me introduce my fellow trustees and staff. Seated to my right are Sarah Bonzer, Superintendent of Schools; Nancy Humphrey, Board Secretary and Trustee Tammy Richards. Seated to my left are Board Vice President Dr. Yoram Solomon; Trustee David Stahle, Trustee Jerry Chambers; Trustee Angela Powell; Sharon Nowak, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent for Trustees; Carla Oliver, Assistant Superintendent for Government, Community Initiatives and Planning; Kerry Cooper, Assistant Superintendent for District Services; Susan Monissette, Assistant Superintendent for Campus Services; Randy McDowell, Chief Financial Officer; Dr. Katrina Hasley, Superintendent for Academic Services; and Dan Armstrong, Assistant Superintendent for Technology Services. Ms. Bonzer, would you please verify that we are in compliance with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act regarding the notice for this meeting?
Yes, President Evander, thank you. This meeting has been posted in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act.
Thank you. So, the next item on our agenda is an item for discussion and action, and it is where the Board will consider approval of required annual financial reports for the fiscal year which ended June 30, 2018. The comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFR, for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2018, is the reporting resulting from the annual financial audit process. Randy McDowell, Chief Financial Officer, will present the report this evening. Randy?
Thank you, President Evander. And so I will turn this over to Linda Madden, the Executive Director of Financial Services. And we also have with us a partner with Weaver, our auditor, and that's Jennifer Rivka. So I will hand the mic back to them.
All right, so we do have a PowerPoint presentation this evening. It's very brief, just highlighting some of the key points with the audit. And I believe you have a highlights page that was included with the agenda as well. Okay. So, the audit is performed by Weaver and Tidwell. We had an unmodified opinion from our external auditor, and that is the type of opinion that you want to receive. Our single audit report has no deficiencies in controls over compliance or any question across. If you want to look at that in more detail, it's on page 138 in your audit. Then, we did meet last Friday morning at 11 with the Board Audit Committee and went through the audit report in much more detail than we are going to do tonight. And Jennifer and Jerry Gaither, both from Weaver, were present for that review. Just something to point out to you, if you would like to just have more of a high-level view of the audit and a little more information, you can look at our discussion and analysis of the financial performance of the district. It begins on page 7 and goes to page 20. That's called the Management Discussion and Analysis section, and that gives you some key overview and highlights there. So, the next schedule that we're going to focus on is Exhibit C1, and that's on pages 26 and 27 in the audit report. And it shows our fund financial positions there. I'm sorry, I'm not keeping up. It's a interesting little setup here. So, we start with our general fund, and our fund balance increased by 15.5 million over the previous fiscal year, and we ended with a total fund balance of 242.8 million. If you are looking at the schedule, you'll see that the assigned fund balance includes encumbrances, which are purchase orders at the end of the fiscal year that carried forward, and 15.3 million in total there, but definitely the majority of those relate to hail repairs and capital outlay for 12.9 million. Then we have inventory prepaid items that are non-spendable of 1.1 million, and our unassigned fund balance is 226.4, and that is 35.4 percent of total expenditures. Last year, that percentage was 37.6, so a slight decrease in unassigned fund balance as a percent of expenditures. Then if you look over at the next column, that's the debt service fund. We just had a very small increase there of 1.1 million. Our August interest payment went up slightly by $649,892. We had a total ending fund balance of 41.2 million, and that does look high when you're looking at fund balance of debt service at the end of June, but it's because in August, on August 15th, we have a $22.3 million debt payment that is due. We pay our debt payments in February, February 15th and August 15th every year, so we have to collect those taxes throughout the year. And by the time we get to late spring and into June, we have very low tax revenue coming in, so we've had to collect those taxes in order to make that August debt payment of 22.3 million this particular year. That's the amount that it was. So, capital projects, we had an increase there in fund balance of 19.2 million, and our ending fund balance was 308.2 million. So, you remember that we had a very large bond issuance in the '16-'17 year, and then at the very start of '17-'18, we had the second issuance of 120.35 million in bonds, including the premium there. So, that is the reason for the large fund balance there, is our recent bond issuances and just the scheduling of those projects and getting things going and started. And then the last column there is our other funds. So, that fund balance ended with 17.9 million. Several of those items are restricted, so our food service, our food and nutritional services balance is 7.5 million. We have some state grants that are restricted for 761,962. Campus activity funds account for $4.7 million. We do have a Health Science Academy, a local grant-type fund that has a million-dollar fund balance in it. Our E-Rate funds are approaching a million there at 937,000. And then we have several other funds that combine for 3 million for the remainder of what makes up that full amount of 17.9 million. And those are the highlights that we wanted to share with you tonight. And I'm sure if you have any questions, we'll try to answer those for you.
Board members, do you have any questions about the CAFR?
No, but I'd like to make a comment if I could. Thank you. You know, I've served on the Audit Committee ever since I've served on the Board of Trustees, and I've talked to the auditors every year, and I'm always impressed with the way our school district is recognized, being easy to work with, you know? And part of what makes us have a good debts/ debt rating is because our district is efficient and puts together an amazing CAFR, Consolidated Annual Financial Report, a CAFR. And we've won the Excellence Award in that for how many years, Linda?
I think it's 35.
35, okay. And I imagine it'll happen again. So, I just wanted to point out that every time I sit down with the auditors for our exit meeting, they give us so many compliments on the great job that our district does. So, I wanted to say thank you to Linda and your team, and of course Randy, and point that out that our district is a low-risk district, and we seem to do a pretty good job at keeping our financials done right.
And I'd like to introduce, I'm sorry, give some recognition to Angela Marks-Kosky. She's our new Director of Accounting, and she certainly was insisted and was running for Kristy all the way through this audit report this time around, so I'd like to recognize Angela.
Yeah, and I'd just like to touch on just one more time. It was pretty much a perfect audit. I mean, there were no material weaknesses, there were no significant deficiencies, the auditors made no adjusting entries, so that's really just about as good as you can do. And I want to thank Linda for finishing strong in her position, so she'll be finishing up with us next month. And Kristy Teague, Linda actually talked her into staying two more months. She was going to retire at the end of August, and Linda said, "Please help us get this audit done and help us work with Angela on the audit." So, they worked really hard to make this successful, so we appreciate that.
So, Linda, is this your last meeting with us?
It's probably at least my last time to present anything to you.
Present.
To get some thoughts on the recent project.
We could add you to the agenda. Well, thank you for not just a great result this year, but for all of your years of service in keeping us in the great, you know, supporting the CFO and just running a great operation and helping the district to be in the best financial position that we can be. So, thank you. So, at this time, they have a motion.
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the required annual financial reports for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2018.
I second.
I have a motion by Nancy Humphrey and a second by Yoram Solomon that the Board of Trustees approves the required annual financial reports for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2018. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll now vote. Please raise your hand for all those that are in favor. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. That is the only item we have for action this evening. The other items are report-related. And the first one is college and career readiness in Plano ISD. We heard part of this report at a previous meeting, and this is the other half of the report. This supports the district's goal to ensure continued improvement in student learning. This evening's presentation will provide information on college and career awareness learning, K-12, ACT/SAT performance and participation, and post-secondary information on graduating seniors. Susan Monissette, Assistant Superintendent for Campus Services, will present this information to the Board. Susan?
Thank you, President Evander. I have my colleague, Jana Hancock, who is the Director of Counseling and Guidance for the district, and Jana's actually going to share information with you, really our P-12 continuing/ continuum of preparation for career and college readiness for our students after they graduate.
Thank you, and good evening. I apologize for my raspier-than-usual voice, so if you can bear with me, I would appreciate it. We really appreciate the opportunity to share with you about all of the successes our students are experiencing and how we're supporting them as they learn and grow and become ready to head off to the next adventure after high school. So, tonight, we'll be covering the way we scaffold learning for our students, beginning with pre-K all the way through 12th grade and prepare them to launch beyond their. We'll also discuss academic conferences and our Naviance tool and how we're using both of those programs in order to support our students as they make plans and learn about what possibilities there are available to them. Next, we'll turn to ACT and SAT results and how our students are performing there, which certainly leads them directly to particular college opportunities. And then we'll give you a report on where our students are now and what they're pursuing after high school. Okay, so, as Susan mentioned, P-12 is really our focus here. We work, counselors work to prepare students academically. Lots of support is given to students who may be struggling and identifying supports that would help them to be more successful. Career readiness begins very early, and I've actually seen some of the tools that we're using, and it's usually books about community helpers and how those people contribute and what their jobs are like. So, it starts very early, and then it continues through 12th grade. Skill development is another important piece of this. Those workplace skills are essential to be coupled with those academic skills. Are they able to work together? Are they able to persevere and complete difficult tasks? And the social-emotional health is really aligned with what we're accomplishing through counseling and guidance programs. So, those two really work hand-in-hand together. Lastly, counselors are very involved on their campuses with rewards programs and acknowledging our students for their accomplishments, and that looks very different on different campuses. But that's one of the most fun things that we get to do. In elementary, we'll start there. We have a very robust guidance program in the elementary schools. Counselors are in those classrooms with students at least every two weeks. So, they develop all their lesson plans at the beginning of the year in order to meet certain requirements, certainly to meet required guidance less/ or guidance topics, and then to work on all those college and career readiness skills, workplace skills. So, I think it's a highlight for our elementary students when the counselor comes to visit every two weeks. Counselors also host parent meetings. They're focusing on providing or helping their parent/ helping those parents to be aware of possibilities that are out there for students, particularly related to the next level. For example, when they go up to middle school, they work with parents on that transition, which is a big transition. So, that's some of the focus in terms of parent meetings and events there. College and Career Week happens in January every year, and it's a very big week on our elementary campuses, lots of activities. College mascot bingo. I've heard college fight songs played, and there's a contest to identify who that is. And we're really expanding what we used to call College Week. It's now called College and Career Week, because we really want to honor those students who may not decide to pursue a four-year university degree, because we know there are a lot of other options for them out there. So, dress-up days are a favorite, and I'm just going to interject a story that I'm known for doing, that I saw a picture of a kindergartner one day for Career Day, and she dressed up like a bride. So, that was her career goal in kindergarten. So, we continue to work with her throughout her career to expand her options. So, it's one of my favorite Career Day stories. Continuing on to middle school, we have a, oh, thank you. There are some programs that we have in place that really help support students, in particular those students that may not have anyone else in their house that has pursued a college education, because we know there's a whole new vocabulary. The process is very difficult and cumbersome sometimes. So, KEES, and you can see what that stands for up there, is a program that begins in middle school, and it supports young women who are the first in their household to attend college, maybe even to graduate from high school. So, that program kind of works in tandem with Journey, which is our program for young men. And Robin Garcia's group actually oversees that. They're represented on 13 different campuses right now. And then part of the work that they do involves looking at how to go to college, how to pay for college, how to find a college that best fits you, how to pursue other opportunities that may not look like a four-year degree. They also have partnerships with Texas A&amp;M Commerce and Collin College, and they're able to visit campuses. It's extracurricular, so a lot of their campus visits are on weekends. So, they really develop a great cohort on those campuses, because they really spend time together from sixth grade on up. So, that's a great program. And I won't talk a lot about Avid, but we all know about Avid and how great that is as a support for our students. Career Day is another really big day on a middle school campus, and I see some Career Day speakers here tonight. But that's really something that our middle school students look forward to. And I'll talk more about Naviance in a minute, but we're using Naviance to help students prepare for Career Day, which looks like speakers in the classroom or a career fair in the gym where you can visit with different representatives of different careers. So, we're really working to make that a more meaningful time by giving them some tools and some, letting them do some research so that they know who they want to talk to. So, we're excited about that as well. College and Career Week activities at the middle school is also, that's a big week for them as well. And they do more activities around wear your college shirt and that kind of thing, so they enjoy that. And really, those days or those weeks are just meant to increase awareness, make them aware of all the different possibilities, start conversations with their teachers about where they went to college and what it was like. And one thing I missed, and I'm going to go back to, we do have a lot of former students that come back at both the elementary and the middle school, and our kids really love that, to be able to talk to a real-life college student and find out what it's like to be on a college campus. So, they ask a lot of really great questions about, usually not about academics, they want to know about everything else, which I think is really important so that those kids understand, "This is a welcoming place and a place where I can be happy and learn and develop my interests." So, that's an important part of what we do during those Career Days.
Jana, before you move on, we used to have in eighth grade a test called Explore. Do we still do that?
We do not. And I couldn't talk to you about, couldn't answer the question about why. I think it has something to do with ACT. But I have good news with this next slide. Naviance provides our kids with so many tools. We've actually developed a scope and sequence that begins in sixth grade, and there are three different surveys of sorts that they can take on Naviance that lead them into that career information. They start with a cluster finder based on Holland's code. So, they take kind of a survey of their interest, and they learn which area they might be interested in. And then, and this is one of my favorite topics, actually, I really love the Naviance tool. It's very interactive, and the students, this is the way it usually works for us, is the counselors are up there explaining what to do next, and they're already gone. They've already taken off, and you can select a career cluster, find different careers underneath that cluster. You can select one of those jobs, and you can learn what the salary would be in Texas, what a typical day looks like in that career, what kinds of skills you would need, and then you'll find out what kind of training you need. And then if it lists college majors related to that career, you can click on a college major, and it'll show you which colleges offer that major.
Is it linked to the ONET database that the Department of Labor has?
It is not, well, it is. That's where all their data comes from.
Okay.
Yes. So, and the nice thing for us is that instead of attempting to keep information like that up-to-date, Naviance does that for us. So, they have all the most up-to-date information on colleges and all that career information as well.
So, how long do the students have access to that system?
Six through 12. In sixth grade, they're given an account that's their personal account, and they can actually save careers and save colleges to their favorites list. And then as they get older, they're actually transferring some of those over to their application list. So, they can save one and go back and research it further if they like. They can make notes in a journal. They can also look at courses they're interested in that relate to their careers. So, that's another tool, and I'll, like I said-
But even after they graduate, they still have access to ONET. ONET is open, it's the Department of Labor website.
Yes.
And so, they can do this at their leisure?
Exactly.
They don't have to do it in the classroom, okay.
Well, and we've actually increased that access for them. It's been made much smoother. We used to send them to the website connected with that school, but now we've, with the help of Matt Fry's group, we've put an app on their web desk. So, our usage has gone up greatly, because if they have a few free minutes, they can just click on that app, takes them directly to their page and their account. And in addition to that, they've rolled out a mobile-friendly or mobily accessible, I'm not saying that correctly, but mobile, whatever. But they can look at it on their phone, and that's really helped, because if we need them to accomplish something like, say, a graduation survey, we don't have to get into a computer lab, we can ask them to take out their phones.
That's good to hear.
Yeah. So, that's really going to help us with getting some of those surveys completed that we get information from. And that just rolled out in August.
Do we have the data on how many people are actually using the career research tools?
You know, I can find that. I didn't bring that usage data, but I will.
I'm real interested to know that and to see what kind of growth we're getting with more accessibility.
Mm-hmm. Yes, we are too. The kids really love it, and it's about them. It's their personal research about themselves and their interests, so we think that's really why it's appealing to them.
Well, when you were asked about the test, I mean, my thought was, you know, that I would take the test and it would tell me to be like a gardener or something. I don't-
When you're led-
You should be a gardener.
I probably should, yes. But when you're, when you can actually be active in the process, I think it's much more valuable, and I'm interested if we got, if we're getting better usage.
Yes. I'll pull that information for you.
Can I interject? I think Jalen's test was terrible. My daughter, who's a technology consultant at Deloitte, was told she should be a prison guard because she's well-ordered and he was that. Because you don't need to tell a senior career, that's what her life was.
Yes, exactly.
Who had here someone who's supposed to be a mortician?
Caroline was a mortician. Yeah, a mortician for working with senior citizens. So, I'm personally glad that that's been spawned. And it doesn't appear from the screen shot that NOS has done some updates, because we started using it, my daughter, it was 2012. It was a terrible user interface, so it appears it's gotten better.
It is, yes, significantly improved.
It was actually one of the teachers didn't want to use it for any of their recs and stuff.
Yeah, it's much cleaner and simpler and much more accessible, and they've told us that it meets industry standards in terms of the, there's a little heart that they select now to save a favorite career, college, or a favorite career cluster, and that's supposed to be something they're accustomed to doing on other sites. So, they've definitely improved it. And I will add in, they're reworking the course planning element, which I'll get to in a second, but they actually came to visit with us and got our input on what we'd like to see in the next rendition of course planning, so that was exciting as well. And the other thing I'll mention about the career planning is that students can retake those tests, because the person they are in seventh grade is probably not the person that they are in 10th or 11th grade, so they can retake some of those assessments and kind of get a fresh look at where they, how their interests may have changed. So, we like that feature as well.
I'm glad they did, because I strongly advocated for us to adopt in 2010, and when I had to use it as a parent, I thought, "Oh, my."
It's a growth process, I mean, it's a continuum of use, and I've learned that over the last several years, that it's implementing different pieces of it is, you know, there's a lot of training involved with counselors. The kids are having the easiest time with it, so the rest of us that are trying to get caught up with them, but they really are able to navigate it very easily, and they appreciate having their own account. And I'll mention really quickly, our parent accounts, they, the counselors are able to send an invitation of sorts along with information about the program and a code where a parent can create their own account and view their students' information. And that's designed so that the parent and student can have conversations, say, in advance of an academic conference, or so that they can be aware of what their students are doing. So, they're not able to change anything or select a college for their student or a career, but they can view what their students are seeing and what kinds of things they've done on that program, so.
That mobile app gives them the ability to sit at home at the dinner table if they want to meet their parent and have a conversation.
Absolutely.
That's wonderful.
And they can still access it through the website, you know, if they didn't log into their web desk at home. So, there are multiple ways they can get into it. And I don't want to skip around, but we are excited about the use of it with our academic conferences, because a parent and a student can actually look that over and talk about it a little, and then come to the conference with questions and kind of a starting place for that. So, it has a lot of great uses.
Jana?
Mm-hmm.
Is it possible for the parent to, maybe they're going through a career change, would they have the ability to take one of those tests also to kind of see where their interests might be?
If they logged in as their student, so their student would have to give them access.
But you can go to the ONET website again, that's-
Mm-hmm.
That's the Department of Labor. O-N-E, O-N-E. Actually, the website is onetonline.org. And that's where the data for the student is coming from. And same thing, careers, different careers, how much do they pay, what is the expectation of openings in Texas, in the U.S.?
It's great information. But yes, in answer to your question, a parent could get into the site with their student's information and click careers and find information. So, it really could be helpful to a parent as well.
I thought you were going to ask a different question. I thought you were going to ask if the parent can manipulate the tool so that their student is going to come up with whatever career he wants.
Yes. It's intentionally set so that it's the student's choices and voice and not the parents'.
No matter what I do here, I get the lawyer.
Exactly.
So, can I piggyback on Tammy's statement? If we adopted this in 20, would you say 10?
2010.
So, we've only had maybe one graduating class that has had this the whole time from sixth grade through graduation. So, when you're looking at the stats in terms of usage, if it's not too difficult, I'd kind of be interested to know how it's grown over the course of our usage.
Mm-hmm, definitely.
Just in terms of analyzing.
And when we started it, it's actually our sixth year, we rolled it out initially to senior high schools and worked on that transcript, transmission and all the college application materials first. Then we moved down to the high schools and then to the middle schools. So, we could get you a timeline of who was using it at each year and what those usages looked like.
Well, I don't remember Blake having it. My son, who's graduated in 14, I guess, so he probably only had it at the high school level. Or maybe even when he got to senior high.
Yeah.
But I do remember him at the other two.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
The functionality has grown.
It has.
I mean, there's that component to think about when we look at usage too.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's exciting because there are more tools that we can expand and grow, but it's, you know, the scope and sequence, I think, is really helpful for counselors to have a strategy for what we're focusing on each year. There's a resume builder in there that our ninth graders start, so they can actually update that every year. And it prints out a really nice resume at the end. So, it's really, really nice for a lot of different ways that they can use it. They can set goals. Our elementary kids know how to set SMART goals. Their counselors work with them on that. And so, through the program, for example, we have an academic or social-emotional goal built in every year of middle school. So, that's one of the tasks assigned to them. And then, they can monitor their progress in meeting those goals. And then, they're always there so they can look back and remember what their goals were at earlier points and then build on those goals. So, very exciting. And then, the only other thing on this slide is all the resources that are available. Counselors can post messages on the student's homepage. We can put links to any other number of websites. We can post brochures or information. We'll be posting information about the new Future Industries Academy on the home pages so that it really becomes a one-stop shop where they can find any information that they want. So, we're excited about being able to have them accessing that as their go-to place. Okay, and then, we will actually look at Naviance. This is a screenshot from Plano East, which I guess that's where I go-to place. But you can see the message that they've given there. And across that top right-hand corner, you can see where they access all the different elements of the program. And then, they can save their favorite spots down here if they're going to one or more places more frequently, they can save that. You can see down in the left-hand corner in the to-dos, that's where a counselor can actually email a student and say, "I've given you a task. You haven't completed your college application. I'd like for you to do that before it's due." So, they can use it to communicate through email. Our students can go in there and edit an email wherever they like to be or where they like to be communicated. And then, counselors can send them messages. They can also send parents messages through Naviance. So, that's become a good communication tool. Oh, actually, I'm going to get to that. Okay, there's a lot of great stuff, so it's hard to. Okay, and career planning tools, this is where they find their career tests over there on the left of those surveys. And then, basically, they can go to the top there and put in any career or any career cluster and it pulls it right up for them. And then, like I said, they can continue to explore and look at related careers. Road Trip Nation is a favorite of particularly our middle schools. There are over 5,000 videos there that are usually pretty short. So, one of the tasks every year for middle school is to go in and find a video about a leader in a field or something they don't know about and they fill out a little survey on it. So, they love that. All they need is a pair of headphones or earbuds and they can watch videos and actually hear people talk about what they are doing, what that looks like, and how they got ready to be in that particular career. So, they really love that as well. Okay, and then, college planning, and this is a senior high screenshot, so there's a lot there. Again, they can save colleges they're thinking about, colleges they're applying to. They can also plug in a college name at the top and find information about a particular college. They can link to the college's website. Or they can find all sorts of information on Naviance itself about the cost, the extracurricular activities that happen there, the majors they offer. So, all the information you would want to know about a college is on this page. And then, like I said, anything they're interested in, they can save. And then, you can see some of the other things. They love the College Supermatch because you can go in there and filter it by about 15 different filters. Do I want a small school, a large school, a big city? Do I want there to be a football team? You can just put in just about anything that you want to. And the list of colleges narrows as they put in requirements. And then, it's really interactive. They can click on the college, read about it, save it or not, go back. So, that's their favorite, I think. They can also put two or three different colleges in and it'll pull up a side-by-side summary of those so they can compare just a few colleges. So, more research than you could possibly do in a day, I would say. Okay, and then, to continue with our high and senior high programs, those are getting much more in-depth and detailed. And the Naviance program is really kind of set up, like I mentioned, ninth grader start a resume. They do a strengths explorer to really look at what things am I good at and what else am I interested in? And they can really fine-tune those careers. And we're asking them to save two or three careers a year, beginning in sixth grade, so they can kind of get an idea of what they want to explore more. Guidance lessons are largely focused around selecting a college in the high school, how to apply to a college in the senior high, and then, of course, other options that are made available to you or where you can continue your learning after high school. College Night, we have two of those events every fall and they rotate amongst the three senior highs. We typically have around 200 college reps at each college night. And I wouldn't even guess at how many people are there, but I can tell you, it's a lot. So, we've never attempted to try to count, but it's a huge turnout. High school students are also invited. We have middle school students come just to meet with college representatives. Some of them do presentations. So, those are really important events that we hold each fall. Career fairs happen on high schools and senior highs. And what we're really focusing on there is those two-year schools. And typically, those happen during the day. So, students can come down before school, during an elective course, a lot of those teachers will bring them in. And they get a chance to explore a lot of those vocational technical schools that are in our area. So, that's been a really successful event on our senior highs as well. College representatives are at our senior high campuses most days. And then, sometimes it'll be three or four, sometimes they all get together and there's 10 or 12. And the great thing that happens with Naviance that Susan was alluding to a minute ago is that we record all of those visits in Naviance. And for example, if Oklahoma State is visiting a campus, we can set it to where, when we record that college visit in Naviance, it'll send an email to every student who has Oklahoma State on their list. So, they get a personalized email saying, "Be aware, this college is visiting your campus." We can also post area events. So, they might want to know that a school is having an event in the area in the evening. So, that's something that's really, really helpful in terms of getting the word out and maybe encouraging them to stay back a few minutes at lunch and visit with the rep that they're interested in visiting with.
Now, we don't think the automated process of getting the permission when you're going to do a college visit, piece of paper you have to pick up at the counselor's office and take with you to the university?
You know, we have it. And that really comes from attendance, office, but that's a great idea and we can certainly look at that. Or at the very least, making it available here so that it's...
Now, it's form, yes.
Yes. Okay, and the parent meetings are very well-attended here or at this level because parents are interested in how does this process work? What does financial aid look like? How can I plan not only academically but financially, which is a big issue for a lot of our parents? How do I fill out college applications? So, all of those things are topics of our parent meetings at the senior highs. We also have breakout sessions at a lot of the junior orientations or the incoming 11th graders and incoming 9th graders to kind of give parents more information about those processes. And then, we do have ACT and SAT test centers that our senior highs operate. So, it's really not a function of the school, but we all, all three senior highs are also test centers. So, it's not just for Plano students, it's for any student that signs up. But we offer most dates in the district so that our students can take an ACT or an SAT in the district if they choose.
Are we looking at actually that testing during the school week and that number of districts have done that in order to...
Mm-hmm. I believe that Dash's group is exploring that. And we certainly considered it, so.
Jenna, on the parent information meetings, I know those are an after-school activity. Have you guys talked about the feasibility of incorporating some of those financial aid application processes and college application processes into the school day in any way?
Yes. And really, we're doing that right now largely through our Collin County, I mean, Collin College Advisors that are embedded on our campuses. So, particularly with all the Chromebooks that Dan and Matt's group have provided, that makes it so much easier because all the financial aid applications now are online. I think you can download a paper form, but it's, you can't do it anymore. Sarah, yes, Sarah would know. So, the Chromebooks have helped, but we set up sessions constantly, particularly during lunch, but they can work with students any other time on completing an application, completing a financial aid form. And a lot of times, that does involve the parents because they have to have their tax information, that kind of thing. So, those Collin College Advisors are there to help not only with students that are doing dual credit or planning to attend Collin College, but any college. So, that's been a real boost to our efforts there. Yep.
I'm hearing a lot of things that parents in the past have paid a consultant to do. And I like that we're doing this here in our district so that our kids who don't necessarily have parents that can pay, there's a commitment to equity.
Yes.
You know, feel to this, so I appreciate that.
Yes.
How about scholarships? Helping finding scholarships?
You know, they can actually, and I think that's on another one of my slides, but I'm happy to tell you about it. And I remember years ago, we had big filing cabinets full of all of our applications. Now, they're all on Naviance. So, most of them are links to applications on an organization's website, but they can go into the scholarship list, save the ones that they know they want to apply to. All they need to do is click in that, on that page and they're taken directly to the scholarship site to apply.
And how deep is that research behind it? So, the different organizations, how broad is it?
There's a national, several national databases that are available to students on Naviance. And then, we post any local groups and basically anything else that we hear about. You know, in fact, some of you sent information about scholarships in the past and that's where we post them. And the nice thing about that is that a student doesn't have to come down to the counselor's office and dig through a filing cabinet. It's accessible to them 24 hours a day. So, that's helped in terms of kids locating scholarships. And then, counselors are available to help with those applications as well as our Collin College staff.
I literally just texted my juniors and seniors, told them to go look for scholarships.
Oh, yeah.
No, I'm not joking. I just did.
Well, we encourage juniors to do that. Like, you need to check it out now so that you know what you want to apply for next year, so.
Jenna, may I ask a question? With the tab under scholarships and money, is there a place where the teachers will put their recommendation letters for students?
Yes.
So, it's in there and within the program embedded?
Exactly, yes. They can do all of their requests to teachers for recommendations. And then, the teacher can upload the letter and then it's sent electronically, which we, initially, when we started with this program, that was our biggest concern because we had colleges telling us if you mailed this to us, it will sit in a bin for potentially weeks until we're able to file it and then scan it and review it. So, the electronic submissions of all those application materials are really essential for our kids. And this enables us to send school reports, transcripts, recommendations, all in one package to a college. And then, the students can actually see that it's been sent. So, that eases their anxiety a lot because I remember before we had this tool, they were constantly coming by saying, "Did you mail it? Did you mail it?" And anyway, there was a week, you know, weeks-long lag time between. So, now, they can see on the program that the registrar sent their transcript to a particular college.
That's very good.
So, it's, yeah. Okay, and then, let's move to, let me see if I covered anything. Yes. Okay, and then, I mentioned the partnership that we have with Collin College already. And they're just a great partner to us in many ways in terms of making our students aware of certificate programs and associate degree programs that they have. That's one thing our advisors will do with students is they'll sit down and go through a career assessment with them and talk to them about the different career possibilities they have on their campus, which is really great. The Foundation for Choice is a group that we're partnering with more robustly this year. I would say they've been kind of piloting this program with Plano Senior High. Now, they're in all of our senior high campuses, including the academy. But basically, they provide a mentor for a student and students apply. And that mentor works them through a curriculum to help them decide where I want to go, help them with the application, help them with financial aid or anything that they need. They also are given the opportunity to go to a business and shadow their mentor or something else that's related to their career interests. So, we're really excited to have brought them on board. So, they're a nonprofit that just work with our students.
So, they provide a mentor?
They do.
Yes, the mentors are volunteers there. I got my head slapped when I introduced them to our senior high school principals.
Oh, yeah, it's a really neat group. You can read about them on their website, but it's a really great program. And then, the other thing I wanted to mention is that counselors, particularly at the senior highs, are very involved with our college reps. We're able to see on Naviance where our students are going and where the interest is. And we make sure to connect with them. They do updates in the area. And we really try to make sure we're represented at those updates so that we can learn what's happening at that particular college, how best to support our students with their deadlines and their application process. Same is true for our technical schools in the area. They do a similar thing where we can go visit, see what those schools look like and advise our students more thoroughly. Okay, and then, academic conferencing, and many of you may know how this is structured or you've been in these conferences yourself, but we start in eighth grade with that four-year planning conference. And the exciting thing with Naviance there is that they're now completing their four-year plans through the Naviance program. And I'm sure that some of you remember writing out the four-year plan on the paper. And then, if it changes, there's a lot of scribbling and marking out, and it does change, I think, 100% of the time. But this allows it to be a living document so they can go in then again in ninth grade, adjust their coursework for, you know, the next three years. And then, they have access to that anytime. They can create multiple plans... They can create multiple plans if they just want to see what that would look like. So, we're really excited to do that fully this spring. 8th graders will be doing their career assessments and doing some work prior to the conference. Then, they'll go in, create their four-year plan, and be ready to go. And then, that will be updated each year. 9th grade, we do small group conferences, just like we do in 8th grade. And again, we'll be using Noviance to plan and prepare for those. And the goal really there is for us to spend as much time as possible with those students and their families, not grinding through courses and looking at courses. We want to do all that in advance, so that then, when we sit down with parents and students, we can discuss all the options and spend some more time getting to know that student and their families, talk about what they're experiencing at school. So, we're excited about that as well. 10th and 11th graders have individual conferences, which we feel really privileged to be able to do, because, you know, when I talk to my colleagues in other districts, they don't have that ability to spend an hour with each one of their families, which is really, really important, and I think a crucial part of our ability to prepare them for the future. So, we have some things in the works, like we're creating some videos that talk about graduation plans, so that a parent could view that in advance if they choose, come ready with questions. And then, if for some reason they want to watch it again, and they missed something, they can do that. So, we're working really to maximize the time that we have with students, not going through as many nuts and bolts. And certainly, we'll do that if needed, but we're trying to equip them in advance, so that we can really maximize that time and make it more individual.
I have a question about the scheduling. I just remember getting a postcard from my daughter where I was assigned to 9:27 a.m., and they said they couldn't reschedule. Unfortunately, I have a complex building, I could meet the time period, but others might not. And those are probably the parents who need the engagement most of all. Do we still have such a rigid process?
We really don't. Most of our campuses are using, and I'm not going to get the program right, but their parents can go in and choose a time. Sign-up genius.
Oh, okay.
So, that really helps in terms of scheduling. And basically, they get a good response from parents who get to choose their time, and then they go in, pick up the kids who aren't there, reach out and assign them a time. So, that's helped a lot with parents' scheduling.
Do you still have the blue packets?
At Plano Senior High?
Well, this is at Plano West, where you would fill out your information as a student, because many of these counselors have never met you till that day, particularly kids who are trying to get into top schools, they need a great rep.
Exactly.
And so, this is about it.
We do, and it depends on the school you're in as to what color it is. But, that's available to students on Noviance. And in case the others of you aren't aware of that, they, because like Tammy said, we, you know that student, but you may not know everything. So, this packet is designed to get information from them about what they've done, what they've done outside of school. Some of our students have worked, some of them take care of family members. And then, there's also kind of a parent brag sheet. That's where we get most of our information, because students are reluctant sometimes to talk about themselves, but their parents will tell us what we need to know. So, that allows counselors to write really detailed letters and really, you know, make sure that that college understands who that student is.
And that's so important. When I was at S U D, I'm doing scholarship review, I would get letters of rec from five school kids, six pages singles-based. And so, I want to make sure our kids are also competitive with us.
I can tell you that we probably don't do six pages, but, but yes.
A little overkill, but that was the level.
And you know, that's still, because Noviance is wonderful, but we don't want to take out that personal connection. So, that packet still requires the counselor and the student to visit, and they can talk about what's in the packet, and, you know, the counselor is going to ask other questions. So, there's still that personal element to it, which I think is important, because they can request online or on Noviance, but we, that requires them to visit with us, so that we can make sure we're, you know, telling the story of who they really are in that letter. And our counselors really do a great job. They, I would say they spend an hour to an hour and a half on every letter, is what they're telling me now. So, yep. Okay, and then, I think I've already kind of alluded to this, but the work that we're doing in terms of making those handbooks that some of you got on paper, those are available online in advance. So, we realize that not every student, every parent will access that information in advance, and that's fine. But if they do, they come ready with their questions, which we think is an advantage, as opposed to how many times we've left a meeting and thought, "I wish I'd asked this or that." So, it really helps them prepare as well. Okay. All right, now, I've already mentioned several of these things, scholarships. We're also able to post summer enrichment activities. A lot of colleges do summer learning kind of experiences. So, and we used to have dairy crates full of all these brochures, and kids could come through. Now, they're posted on Noviance. So, if we have a parent that says, "I'm interested in my student doing something this summer other than being at home," we can refer them there, and that's where we keep all of that information about summer camps and summer information, or summer learning opportunities. I mentioned the transcripts already. And then, the graduation survey, and I do have to tell you that one of the biggest challenges is getting seniors in the spring to do something like this. But they're really good about it, particularly now that it's accessible on the phone. I think we're going to get more of them to do it. But, that's how we get the information about what their plans are, where they're headed, what scholarship, or scholarships they've earned. So, that's where all of that information comes from. And it's just a short survey that we've created on the program.
Is there any kind of carrot that we can dangle for them to complete that?
Yeah, we do, yes. I'm glad you mentioned that. We go in, because we know that if we just ask them to do it in their spare time, they will not do it. So, what counselors do is they'll drop in, it doesn't take but about five minutes. So, they'll drop in to English classes and say, now we can say, "Get your phone out if you don't have a Chromebook in front of you, and let's, you know, we need you to do this." So, typically, that's the way we do it. Because if you make an announcement in May, that's, you know, you know how that goes.
They're gone.
Exactly.
So, how does that survey connect to the one that I know Dash's got together that asks about military service? Because I know we've asked them to do it, but I don't think it's been very comprehensive in the past, and so...
You've got a slide that we know that it does include, I think, most of that.
Yeah, it includes two-year invocational technical schools and military and work.
Okay, and so, I thought the plan should be pretty comprehensive, where basically you always leave the last-day schools, where you fill us out. So, is that a different survey than the survey on Noviance?
I'm not sure.
This is the survey we will have to use for Dash's. He and Teresa are working with Jana and the team to tie these two things together, so that we're not asking them to do two different things.
Well, there we can get as much information as we possibly can. Because it's the kids' least likely to fill out the survey that we know the least about.
And I'm looking forward to our next one, because I think that increased accessibility is going to help get everybody on board to do it. So, and I do know of one senior high that was at diploma pickup and picked up everyone that had not done it. Had them do it real quick, and then they got their diploma. So, that's a good incentive, yes.
Jana, before you move on, we used to have in middle school, I think it was in 6th grade, a class that was called exploratory, I think, something like that. I remember my older daughter used to take it, or took it, and my younger daughter was not available anymore, where in one semester, they would give them an opportunity to get exposed to three things. We don't have that anymore. Are there any plans to have something like this?
That was back in the days when we had a little bit more staffing, when we were truly running a middle school program. Our teachers, core teachers, were teaching five out of seven. They had a planning time and a student time, and we staffed so that we had exploratory classes offered as, probably starting in 2011, when our budget cuts hit, middle school staffing was impacted by that. And campuses no longer were able to offer exploratory in that fashion.
Because I think, I don't know how big of an impact it had on kids, but I'll tell you, in career days, when you see a speaker for 20 minutes, and they tell you everything that's great about that career, and they come home, and it's like, "I want to be an officer, really, because I like the uniform." And I don't know anything about what does it mean to be an officer. And if you get a little more exposed, and you get a sense of what it is, even if it's just, you know, a few weeks, you know more of what you're talking about. I think that can help. Is there a plan? Do we have a plan to somehow bring something like that back?
Not currently. It's certainly something we can go back and look at. It really was a financial decision based on staffing.
So, was the exploratory about careers, or was it about? I thought it was about, like, subject...
Subjective.
Yeah. You can take a few weeks of French, and a few weeks of Spanish, and a few weeks of something.
I remember they had computers and...
Yeah. Technology might have been one of the rotations.
Art, I was hoping.
Yeah.
Skills for learning. Yeah. If where you're headed is like exposure to career paths, is that where you're headed? Is that what you're thinking about?
It's disciplines. It's different disciplines, other than math, science, social studies, and...
Like, one thing that I'm hearing a lot, and you probably are too, is about helping students in the middle ages learn more about what's available. And you're talking through some ways of doing that. And then, there's Career Day and this kind of thing, too. And certainly, businesses are wanting access to our middle school kids in order to provide that exposure and begin the talent pipeline development, and hopefully leading to internships in high school and so forth. I certainly see opportunities in that arena to help, you know, kids learn more about just, like you say, disciplines or career clusters from, I mean, the part you're talking about, Jana, is an academic study of it, sort of, you know, by reading about it, and then, there's the Career Day thing. There might be some other, it's an opportunity area. It might not be a classroom-like setting for a semester, but maybe there's an event.
And you know, one thing that we're able to do with Noviance in our reporting area there is pull reports of what they said, for example, in 6th grade they're interested in. And then, they seek out Career Day speakers and visitors that are related to what they know their kids are interested in. So, they get a little more exposure to those things that they indicated they liked. So, that's been helpful as well.
There's a, we joined the Richardson Chamber, the Plano ISD did recently, and so, I'm on one of their education workforce committees. And they started something new last year that they're doing again this year with the business community, and they call it iDream. And it's in January, and they're hosting an event at Richland College where they're doing a survey of students to kind of figure out what are they interested in. And then, the companies, they source it out to find companies that can represent those areas. And then, the students come through. So, it's like Career Day, but there's, they're trying to make it more interactive and interesting, so it's not just a talking head in front of a classroom kind of thing, and they're on a college campus. So, they started small, and I'll go see it in January to see what it's like, but that's one way they're trying to do some of what I think you're talking about. It sounded kind of neat to me.
It does.
Great.
Any other questions about Noviance?
You know, one of the things that I asked David Hitt to start, and I know that he started that, is to have some kind of a database, a centralized database for Career Day speakers, where you would know as a Career Day speaker, you would enter, "Here's my area, here's the, you know, I can do the west cluster, central, east, I can, my best time is this and that." And then, let the organizers of a Career Day go to the database and say, you know, "I'm going to pull, these are the people that I'm interested in, and they're available."
Our counselors would love that.
But if you built this, the tool exists.
And they do share a lot informally, but it would be...
Right.
It would be a wonderful community outreach to be able to do that.
So, you may want to take a look at that database, because it's there.
But you're, they never have me back. I talk about accounting.
I know.
That's a different problem.
But it's a good career.
Yeah, but regardless, it just...
They just don't want it.
You may want to take a look at that.
Robot, that'd kill me.
I feel like, to some extent, I may have forced him to start that, but it's there, and the tool exists. If organizers of Career Days across the district would know, "This is where we reach," and if we advertise it, and let people know...
That would be wonderful.
Let speakers know that, you know, here's where you let, you let the district know, what is it that you can talk about, what is it that you can share.
Who created that, you want to guess?
David Hitt.
Oh, David did, okay.
That's great. I'm not going to tell the middle school counselors this right now, because they've just put all their Career Days together.
Which, you know, I think what we did is, or he did, is he created the tool, and if I remember correctly, it's really using Google Forms, and nothing fancier than that. And so, Dan, you may want to take over and give it a facelift, but I think the first thing that you, we would need to do is advertise this, communicate this, communicate it to the schools on one hand, so that they'll know where to look for speakers, and communicate it to the community, so they'll know that this is where you let the schools know. I remember that the reason for this was I was in a Career Day, and when I came in to talk about entrepreneurship, I was like, the third or fourth speaker that they had for the day, the first three were software engineers. It's like, how many software engineers do you need in one day?
And some of them do struggle, particularly on certain campuses, to get people in.
Right, and exactly.
Some of them have gone more to the fair kind of a setup for that reason, and that way, students can kind of move around and talk to the people that they're interested in speaking with.
But the thing is, that some of the schools, what they do is they just reach to the immediate community. They send an email to the parents and say, "If you can be a speaker on Career Day." I was known enough in the district that I would get schools call me and ask me to participate, but you have that tool, and if we can...
That would be wonderful.
Give it a facelift.
We have been deliberately spacing them out, because we found that in the past, they would just schedule, and there'd be multiples on a day.
Right.
So, we've spread that out, so that more people can attend, maybe multiple Career Days.
Yeah. Imagine if you're putting together a Career Day, and you have this database, and you go, "Well, here's who I want to take." And I even suggested, and I don't remember if you did add that or not, but even have reviews after the fact. You know, "That speaker, maybe we do have reviews."
And they ask me back.
I said that they stop.
No, I said they will stop if you have a menu.
You know, if I show up there, and, you know, I'm all willing to share, but I suck as a speaker, then they shouldn't invite me back.
That's, yeah, that's a brave thing to do, but we can certainly pursue that. Yep. And we can actually do a survey through Noviance to find out what they thought.
Yes.
So, we'll move on then to results of all of the college preparatory exams that our students are involved with. As you know, our 10th graders all take the PSAT. 11th graders take it if they choose to and pay the fee. We are able to give a greatly reduced fee to free and reduced lunch students. But, these results will show you, as I'm happy to share with you every year, that our students continue to perform significantly higher than our state and our national cohort. So, that's testament to all the great work that's happening in our classrooms, I believe.
Can we have a look at the number of 11th graders that can take the test? I actually, well, I personally know a young woman who applied before the deadline, and was told they were out of booklets, and so she was not allowed to take it.
They, there is an ordering deadline that we have to honor with the College Board.
But she didn't miss the deadline. She was within the deadline, but it was still cold, and we weren't able to order a booklet.
That I don't know. I'd have to look at that specific situation.
That's never happened in college.
Typically, they order extra, so that we can allow any student that wants to. We try to have some cushion there, so I'm not sure what happened in that particular situation.
I just want to make sure that that did not happen again, because there's no way to make that up.
Yeah, I would have to check into that. But they should be ordering extra, but there is a point where if they run out, that we can't order anymore.
But she said they didn't.
They didn't...
Well, she didn't apply, like, she applied within the deadline.
I'd be happy to check on that, if you'll give me a date or a year, and I'll check on it.
Probably two years ago.
Okay, I'll check on that. Ideally, that's not going to happen. We have plenty for students regardless of when they register, even if it's beyond the deadline. We will... Even if it's beyond the deadline, we will allow them to do that if we have a test. So. Okay. And then our, our next slide is, is really an amazing bragging point for our, our students. That's the number of our National Merit finalists from 2018. There are 118 of those. So in our surrounding districts, there aren't nearly that many. When, when we compare districts of similar size and similar makeup to, to our students, we, we perform really, really well here.
Why the significant drop from 1617 to 1718?
You know.
That one?
That one, I. Yes, I, I'm going to explore that because I'm not sure of it. Yes, thank you for pointing that out.
Do we have any understanding why there was such a large increase from 16 to 17?
That was when the redesign came in. So it was likely that. Yeah. Okay. Next, we have SAT participation. So this is the number of students that we have that took an, an SAT. And you can see that rose. And this is another thing that I have difficulty explaining, but when students choose to take the ACT over the SAT. But this year, our SAT numbers rose. We had more students taking that. But you'll see in a minute, our ACT dropped a little bit overall. It's, it stayed.
And those are individual, individual students, number of students not individual SAT tests, correct?
Yes. And that, it's not just 12th grade. It would include 11th graders and even some 10th and 9th graders. So those are all Plano ISD students that took a test last year.
Why was that, that there is a transition from ACT to SAT? The, the new format or?
I don't know. I think it has to do with social media and who's taking what and probably is, you know, as simple as that. Yeah, and, because colleges typically don't have a preference. They'll take either one. And we do have students that take both and see how they do. And then they might take a second one of, of one or the other, or both.
14 cohort, that was a bigger cohort. And yet 2017, 18, we have more test takers. So then our commitment to equity, I think, is having an impact here.
I think you're right. Okay. And our next slide will show you score comparisons again between our state and, and the nation. And once again, our students perform very well in both of the reading, writing area and math. And then these are SAT score trends over time. So these are Plano ISD scores over time. And you can see that there's continual improvement over, you know, over the last five years.
Except that drop in reading and writing from 1617 to 1718.
Another big drop.
Yes.
Of one. But look, we went up three in math. So our students are doing very well.
So is there a transition from English to, no?
All right. And then ACT participation. And you can see, as I mentioned earlier, that dropped slightly. But when you put the two together, we were very stable in terms of the number of students taking one or the other. And then here are ACT composite scores again compared to the state and the nation. And once again, we're really proud to see that our students perform well above the state and national averages. And then this is a benchmark that ACT does that, that talks about our students being prepared for college level work. So they, they create scoring in English, algebra, social studies, and biology. And you can see in all those areas how our students compare to the state and nation. And then the 59% of our student or col, or students are college-ready in all four of those areas. So, and, and keep in mind also, these are all graduating seniors taking this test. So they do a lot of learning sometimes between the time they take this and the time they graduate. All right. And then this is a popular topic here. You can look for your particular school. This is where our students are headed. And this information really helps us to understand what schools we need to make sure we're staying connected with and attending their updates. And you can see UTD offers a lot of great scholarships to our students. They have the opportunity to live at home. So that remains our most attended four-year university. And then out of state, there's a lot of competition here between Oklahoma, Oklahoma State, and Arkansas. But those, those campuses that students choose to attend usually are related to scholarship money. So when it comes to that out-of-state tuition, that's a big issue. So, but we do have a large number of students attending out of state. Okay. And this slide shows you the top 20 research universities according to U.S. News and World Report. So you can see how many of our students are attending each of these top 20 research institutions.
By the way, the, the drop in ACT is not fully compensated by the increase in SAT. There's, if you combine them together, we still have a slight drop of about 50.
But there could be in relation to the number of students in the class.
Right.
Yes, because our class sizes are slightly smaller. And, you know, an interesting trend that's happening right now is test optional admissions. So more and more colleges, University of Chicago just came on board and said, if you choose to take one of the entrance exams, you can. But you don't have to. So a student could actually take one and then determine if they want to send those scores. So it'll be interesting to watch how that continues to change.
Jenna, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do we offer an SAT/ACT preparation course as elective?
There, there is one in summer school, but what we normally direct our students to is the Khan Academy, which is directly linked with SAT preparation, but they also offer ACT preparation. It's free and it's online.
Is Jasper still offering the course?
The SAT online course.
No, they used to do their own preparation course.
On Saturday. They, they don't offer it during the school day.
Can students besides Jasper students in the district participate?
Yes.
And of course, just Jasper students, I'm like.
I, I think there, I think there are several high schools that do that as a fundraiser. I know that Jasper kind of led the pack in that, but I think it might have been like Band Booster Club or something sponsored them.
It just would be good if that type of thing would also be in Naviance because just because your ISD is not doing it, you want to make sure my own kids have the discipline.
Sure, absolutely.
There was one that was by invitation. Was that the two?
I'm not sure what that one would be.
That, Jana just referenced Khan Academy, which has really become very in-depth, online, accessible to all students. And probably is as good an option as anything that's being offered.
And one of the advantages that it has is that as a parent, you can keep track of the progress that your student is doing, is making.
Isn't it related to like your SAT results?
Yes, you can actually PSAT and SAT. You, you get a code when you get your results. And you can connect your Khan Academy account to those results. And it'll, it'll actually help you to improve in those areas where you most need improvement.
I do want to follow Nancy's question. I know as long as through 2015, there was a course that Plano ISD offered free of charge to kids that were carefully selected. I guess we thought they were high potential to be National Merit plans. Do we still do that?
Through Teresa's group, is that the one that, American Scholars?
So on that slide right there, Washington University, relatively small school, has the largest number of.
Yeah.
Is that an aggressive recruiting effort here? I mean, versus like a Notre Dame with none?
They are in the area quite a bit. So that, and it makes a difference. If they come and visit students at a school, it makes, it makes a big difference.
Stanford has none.
I remember last year.
Wow.
And it, and that's another thing that's hard to predict is where students want to go. And, and it shifts every year. But I think really the message with this slide is that our students are equipped to go to some of the best schools in our, in our nation. So.
The question I would have is, are we getting our fair share because of our large high school construct? Often the more selective schools, they'll find out all of the kids from a high school. And right now, it's only 55 kids will be getting this top. Do you have any contacts with your colleagues in other districts to see whether we're getting our fair share or not?
I've asked that in the past and they're not really anxious to share that. But I can tell you this just represents students that are attending these colleges. It doesn't represent all of the acceptances. So we have a lot of students that have been accepted to these schools and others that are very competitive, but they've chosen to go elsewhere for a number of reasons.
Do you keep track of the students that are accepted into like an honors program or?
You know, we don't, but that, that would be a good thing to explore, which we could do through our survey.
Next slide is for you, Jerry.
It is. I was gonna, I was gonna point out that, that Jerry knows one of our graduates who's at one of our service academies. So we're certainly proud of that representation there.
It is interesting though that Navy's not represented. And it's also interesting that I think those numbers are down. I, I just am curious if our counselors are equipped because the application process there is so much earlier than.
It starts early.
Starts really, really early. You, you have to know January of your junior year.
Yes. We actually do training on that every so often. And then the service academies do training in the area. So that, that helps.
But it is a tuition-free opportunity.
It's a wonderful opportunity.
Five-year time commitment that's added on.
Wonderful education. All right. And then this is kind of a summary of what we learned from our graduation survey. 89% of our students plan to attend a four-year university. And that includes those that plan to say, start at Collin College and then transfer to a four-year school. 6% plan to pursue a vocational technical degree or a two-year college degree. And then 1.6 of it listed in the military. And then 3% plan to work. And then we asked them as, as a part of the surveys as well, if you're, if you're planning to work for a little while, do you still have plans to attend college later? And that, that 3% said possibly. It's kind of their answer. And then 15% are attending privates, 85 public colleges.
The number of participation in this survey, the percentage of kids.
We had over 3,000 participate. And we're hoping to have more like 3,500 this year.
So I'm guessing that line that says the 89% of four-year college, that will include those that will go for two years in Collin College and then plan to go in four. Because if I remember correctly, one in four of our graduates are, in the first and second year, are in Collin College.
Yes, that's true. And that, we asked that question that way to distinguish between those, those students who are pursuing a two-year degree or less and the ones who are. Because if we ask them, are you going to a two-year college? They'll say yes. But what they mean is I'm starting there and then moving on. So that's a specific question that we ask in the survey. Okay. And then our next slide, and I'll try to, I won't read to you each and every data point here. But Dash will be updating you, I believe, next month on the information about where our students have landed once they leave us. And he's able to pull that from the National Clearing House and determine where they've actually enrolled. And, and really the message here is that, and I'm going to have to cheat and look at my notes really quickly. But what we found out is that nationally, 59% of students complete a four-year degree within six years. And our results were 69%. And, and really to explain that data a little more fully, the, the data that the Clearing House collects is only based on the group of students that started college. And we have 69% of our total student group that's attending college. And that's based on the colleges that participate in the Clearing House program. So we estimate that that's definitely higher than 69%, but again, higher than the national average.
When we see in the blue in the first one, this is the class of 2012. So this is their first year in college.
Exactly.
Obviously, they're all new to college. But on the second column, the, the little slivers, the purple sliver in the bottom, 1.8% graduated?
I was at the graduation when one girl did that. Her little daughter went to Plano Westridge, graduated 2012, she graduated A and 2014.
Wow. Now, this is two.
There's two.
Well, and it tracks two-year colleges as well. So it could be that those students earned an associate degree. Or they came in with a lot of credit.
Okay, so then that's all of them.
Yes, it's two and four-year.
Got you.
And then you'll see those little, little bits of blue there because that, that indicates students who.
Waited.
Waited. And then they started later.
Yeah.
So, and again, I'm not going to delve into this too deeply. But, but the, the message is we are able to track these students to a large degree through this program. And we, we do know that our students are completing four-year degrees and two-year degrees at a much higher rate than the national average.
NSC, National.
National Student Clearing House. And about 93% of colleges are members of this clearinghouse. So.
Public and Republican private?
Both. Okay. And then I will finish with the next steps and what we're working on in counseling in terms of expanding access. Where as, as, as you all mentioned, we want to make sure that our parents are accessing Naviance, our students are accessing it and using it more. And then that, that completing of the automation process for the four-year course planning on, online as opposed to on paper. The other thing that we're exploring is, is inputting our middle school courses so that students can actually plan their next year's courses in middle school through the course planner. And then financial planning, we, we know that's a big concern of our, for our parents. We want to make sure that they have access to all the information that they need. And again, the more we have them accessing Naviance, the more we can promote our activities, our meetings, our trainings, and give them information directly through the program. So, and that's all I have.
I appreciate the presentation, Randy. And I'm very excited about doing our comprehensive survey. It sounds like about 75% of our kids completed. So it's very important that we make decisions about what programming we want to offer. So Naviance says 89% of the kids say they're going to go to four-year. Around the class enrollment progress, it's 80%. And so four-year kids, we talk a lot about whether we should have courses for welding, what we need to do. Probably still yes, but these numbers say that's not the bulk of our population. And getting a more comprehensive survey will really let us know what we need to plan for.
Very true.
We're sort of guessing around the margins.
Yeah. And you know, the other way we're going to be able to utilize this reporting is to determine based on those course plans, what students are interested in and what they say they're going to take in the next two or three or even four years. So that's another way we can plan. Well, thank you very much for your time and for tolerating my voice. I know.
I, I appreciate the expanded perspective of the college and career reporting that you've done this year. I think everybody appreciated this additional information that you shared.
Well, thank you for your time.
The last report this evening supports the district's goal to ensure efficient use of financial resources and budgeting. Randy McDowell will present a draft policy of CCA local and related CCA regulations for discussion. Randy, over to you.
Thank you, President Bender. I'll ask David Mednich with Hilltop Securities to join us tonight. He is the true expert in this area. And I've been working closely with him and his staff on what we're going to present tonight. So I'd like to start out here, and I think all of you are familiar, but David has been the financial advisor or the lead for Plano ISD for a very long time. And I think prior to him, it was his father. And so he is, he has been very much involved in where we're currently at and also looking forward. So we appreciate his guidance. So I'm going to try to talk from here and keep y'all updated back there if I can. So in our plan of work, we do have the long-term debt plan that by the end of 2018, a long-term debt management plan will be completed in addition to the development of a CCA local policy. When we look at where we're currently at, I wanted to brag a little bit about our bond rating. And I know that y'all are familiar that we carry a very strong bond rating. I really didn't know how strong it was until I did a little more research the other day. But Standard and Poor's says that 3.2% of districts in Texas have a AA+ rating. When I first sent this out, I had in there that this was the highest rating. It is the highest rating that a school district can obtain. They do have a AAA rating, but they do not give that to schools. And so we are as high as we can go. On MUDs, we're also as high as we can go with a AAA rating. And we're one of seven districts in Texas that has obtained that rating. So, so a lot to brag about there. Also a lot to brag about just on some of the significant measures that have improved our debt structure over the last three years or maybe even, or even further back. But definitely in the last three years, we've seen, has seen some historically low bond rates. That's given the district the ability to improve the debt. That's given the district the ability to improve the debt structure and accelerated the repayment of principal by, one of the measures is shortening the average life. Also, new issues were structured with short average life. If you'll remember, the bond issue that we just did this year, for example, there was a five-year bond, the average life was about 1.2 years. So even though we call it a five-year bond, it's really more like a three-year bond or less because we're paying so much of that principal in the early years. We've also been able, and I'm not taking credit for this, most all this was done prior to beginning here, and my friends, my predecessors, Steve and Richard worked really hard on this, but that also gave us the ability to lower the district's debt service and also gave us the long-term ability to manage the district's INS rate the way that it's been structured, and having payments that go down after five years in 2021, which does set it up well for another bond issue if the board and the voters and everyone decides to do so. On the next slide, most of these slides were prepared by David and his team. If you look at the green bar here, so this is the 30-year average debt to taxable assessed value. So that is one thing that financial advisors and us look at is just how much debt do we have compared to what is our taxable value. The bar graph at the bottom shows the district's outstanding debt for about the last 30 years. It has increased, obviously, a lot of that's driven by inflationary costs, that things are more expensive to, construction is much more expensive than it was 30 years ago. The red line shows just year by year what was the district's ratio of tax-supported debt to the taxable assessed value. And you can see since we peaked out in 2010, and over the last eight years, that has come down significantly. So that's a good sign as well. Continuing to look, as far as the next 20 years, so we don't have any debt that's more than 20-year outstanding debt. This is a graph that shows how we will repay that debt over the next 20 years. So in the next five years, we will pay over 46% of our principal. Within 10 years, we'll pay 73.5% of that principal, and in 15 years, we will pay 91% of that principal. And again, so that's, that really looks good. I think if you compare it to other districts, and we'll show you some more information on that. On the next graph, this just shows as a percentage how much of our total debt payment goes to principal, and they've called that the percent of principal repaid. And so we're also on the increase there, which is a good sign that more and more of our payments are going to principal and not to interest. And David, please feel free to jump in if I misquote or if I miss anything.
I think you're doing great.
The next graph is the refundings that the district has taken since 2010. Since that time, there's been total debt savings of over 112.6 million just by taking the opportunities of refunding and taking advantage of lower bond rates. Over on the right, it shows the refunded, how many years were outstanding as far as the average life when the bonds were refunded? After the refunding, how many years, what was the average life? And then also the change. Well, the big one was the 65.9 million that there was almost two and a half years cut off of that debt in the refunding with some significant savings. We see a couple that we added in the restructuring, but it was insignificant. I mean, the one that added 2.3 years of the average life was only 307,000. So that was part of that structuring that we talked about, of sometimes just trying to get the right debt payments in the right time period to try to give you some stability there. So that's one of the factors that is looked at. Next is a comparison that I appreciated them putting together that shows some of our really strong peer districts that are strong like Plano and does some comparison there. So the first column is the total principal outstanding, and that was as of September 21 of 2018, so that's their total outstanding debt, or I'm sorry, the principal amount of their debt, their final maturity of debt. And so, again, we don't have any debt that's more than 20 years, so that's why we got to 2038. Most of the districts, there are some others that are 2038, but most are, you know, 25 and 30 years out. Then we have our taxable assessed value for 2019, and again, ours is 55.6 billion. So when we look at that debt to taxable assessed value ratio, those range from a 0.72, that's the lowest, which is Austin ISD. Of course, they have the highest property wealth at over 126 billion, and the highest of those was 5.18 with an average of 3.13, and we were 1.72, so we were well below the average. And again, those are all strong districts, and if you look in the far right, you can see what their bond ratings are as well. So they're all very strong in their bond ratings. Then further over, we just have their INS tax rate. The low of those is 11.3, which is Austin ISD, the high is 31.26, and we are below the average, I'm sorry, the high is 42, the average is 31.26, and we're about five cents under that average. Any questions on that?
I want to spring break, Blake.
I think we didn't have the rate at the time that this was put together. Oh, okay, so now, what I'd like to talk about is just the CCA local policy. So included in your board agenda, I did attach the CCA legal policy, and we all know what legal is. We don't have any control over that. That's the laws of the government. What we have to do, the district doesn't currently have a CCA local policy or a CCA regulation, which isn't that uncommon if you look around. There's really, and I think we talked about this in our previous board, I mean, there's not a lot of districts that have that. Part of that is, one is, these are standards that districts typically follow, and we have guidance from experts that helps guide us through this process. Also, anything that's done in this area always requires board approval, so it's not like you're giving us a policy that we have a lot of control over because it's, the voters have to approve new debt, and then, of course, the board has to approve any time debt's issued, refund it, so it always comes back to board approval. But some districts have done this. Bond rating agencies like to have a policy on this. They ask us every time we have a bond rating call, do you have, do you have a debt policy? Do you have any regulations? So this is gonna give us the ability to answer that yes. It hasn't hurt our debt rating, but it is always a tool. I think David would agree that a district that's trying to get their bond rating up, it would be something that would help, and maybe it will help us keep it, you know, at the high level that it's at. And so what I'd like to do is, can we switch over to the local policy? So as we looked at the examples of the ones that are out there, and then we also got some TASB examples, there's none of the TASB examples that they sent us as we asked for sample policies that were anywhere near as in-depth as what you're looking at. I mean, they were very short, and so this is much more detailed than what TASB would even recommend, which I think is good. So when we look at the CCA local, our goal was, was try to keep the local policy more simple and try to get the more details into the regulation, and so we've done that. So I'll run through this real quick. As far as the local policy, I don't know if I'm coordinated enough to scroll and talk, but we'll see. So, and again, there's really nothing in here. If there's anything different than current practice, it's gonna be pretty insignificant, and David can sure jump in if he sees something that's different. The other thing, though, this does, I think, is there's been a stable administration here, there's been a very stable financial advisor, but as people change, as his team changes, as we change, it's never gonna hurt to say, well, this is the way Plano does it. And so I think this will help carry that torch into the future. So when we get into these, it talks about the debt management practices. These are all good practices. Maintain the district's financial stability, provide debt management flexibility, match debt to the estimated useful life of the assets, preserve public trust, minimize costs to taxpayers. I did get a comment after we sent this out to maybe add on to that, to make it minimize costs to taxpayers by structuring debt to minimize interest cost. So that's a consideration there, which is all part of that percent of principal repaid. I mean, the goal there is to try to keep interest costs low. Demonstrate administrative oversight of debt programs to credit rating agencies and taxpayers. Then as we move into the guidelines, the debt management procedures, I won't read all of these, but these are, I think you can read them here, they're all good practices that we can follow. So are there any, and then on the next page, and I haven't been at all trying to keep up here, but then also just compliance with the law and sound management requirements as would be stated in the local, or in the legal policy of CCA.
Can you have anything that talks about keeping our eye on the call dates, on potential refundings? Is one of those focused on that?
So as we get more into the regulations-
Okay.
It's in the regulations, it's not-
Are you saying, be mindful of when the call dates are and paying attention to them? Is that what-
Look for opportunities. I think, don't we have some significant debt that's maturing in January of 2019?
Yes.
No, Nancy, that's a good comment, and that's definitely been a practice. I think we cover that in regulation. Let's see if, when we get to that, if we think that covers it. So as we go into the regulation, and as you know, these aren't board-adopted, these are superintendent-approved, but this is really where we get into the detail. So, for example, under the purpose, the purpose of this district's management regulation is to establish responsibilities and guidelines for the issuance of debt obligations and to provide guidelines for the ongoing management of the district's debt portfolio in accordance with CCA local. This regulation affirms, and I think the key word there is affirms, the district's intent to adhere to sound debt management practices within the highest industry, legal and governmental standards, while achieving the lowest cost of capital and maintaining financial flexibility. So really, I think that says it well there. Then it goes into the scope. Can we, I'm sorry, can we go to the other one, Dan, the regulation? And so as we look at those objectives, to maintain financial stability, preserve public trust, we talked about some of those over in the procedures. Let's key on this one for a minute. So, provide sufficient debt capacity for current and future capacity needs of the district. And so it goes into the district shall formulate a multi-year capital improvement plan in conjunction with the financial advisor, the demographer, facilities planner, architect, and bond committee, whichever of those are applicable. The administration shall review the capital improvement plan on an annual basis. So that's something we'll be working on. That'll be like a facility assessment district-wide. That's gonna take time, that's gonna take some professional service, but that's gonna give us the ability to better project out what our long-term construction, what our capital improvement plans will be. Also, working with Dan on technology and all the different school buses, all of that. So just getting a better roadmap for, you know, what the next five, 10, 15 years might look like. And then prioritize those projects, and then a preliminary financing plan of what that might cost. And then also, so the second one under that is to repay its debt obligations as expeditiously deemed prudent, given the applicable tax rate parameters and the district's overall financing, financing objectives, and we'll get into that more in guidelines for payment of debt. Also, provide financial stability, minimize the district's interest in financing costs, so that's always a goal. Then we move down into the next section, allowable purposes for the issuance of debt. Most of those are statutory, those are the allowable purposes or projects of debt. Then we look at guidelines for payment of debt obligations. And so I jumped down into the second sentence there. The district shall repay its debt in compliance with all federal, state, and local requirements, and seek to repay its debt in an expeditious manner within the district's overall financial objectives, the useful life of the project financed and the source of repayment. In no circumstance shall the district amortize its debt obligations for a time period longer than the expected useful life of such project being financed. However, such amortization schedule must not restrict the district's ability to annually manage its INS fund, tax rate, or severely limit the district's ability to issue future debt obligations. So then we go into short-term capital improvement projects, which are those with 10-year or less life, and so that's gonna be our computers, turf, even buses, we don't finance those for more than 10 years. So this just goes ahead and puts that into a regulation of the term that we would finance those over. I know that's been a long practice here, but this just solidifies it. And then on long-term capital improvements, those are ones that have useful life over 10 years. We did put in here a final maturity at no more than 20 years. So with our property wealth, we've been able to do that, you know, at some point in time, who knows what changes in the future, that could have to be revisited, but that does appear to be a very attainable goal for the near future, or even somewhat distant future, I would think. The next part goes into the district's debt portfolio, may be either traditional fixed rate or variable rate debt, and the traditional can be anywhere to 80 to 100% of the total outstanding portfolio, where variable rate could not be any more than 20% if, yes, ma'am?
Can I ask you a question as you go through this?
Yes.
So on the item that we just talked about, the debt obligation, the payment of debt obligation, a long time ago, when I first was on the board, one of the things, a practice that we did at that time, which was maybe allowable then, I wonder if it's still allowable, where we would have some residual at the end of the year, we'd be favorable on the income statement, and then we would take that and apply it to principal. Is that even possible anymore to make payments above, to reduce that? Can you even do that?
Yeah, if you have surplus funds and you have bonds that are callable, you can just go ahead and call the principal amount of the bonds. Otherwise, if you, if you don't have callable bonds, really the most effective thing is we kinda, once you put it in, once it's in the INS fund, it can only go to one place anyway, it can't go anyplace else. But that's some of the things that you have actually have taken advantage of, and a number of years ago, I think seven and eight, you guys had a variable rate program, and you did exactly that, you had them callable. It was a very, it was a good time to do it, and so when you had a surplus, you'd levy it like 1%. And then you were, you were levying it like 2% or 3% what a fixed rate would be, and everything under that, you took it, you paid bonds off. But yeah, that's really about, with the tax reform act, it's not the tax reform act, with the tax change, you can't do advanced refundings anymore, you can only do current. And then I know we, you'll have, talking about those in a moment, the abilities to do there, but we have a number of, and you can also, we've had them use it to stabilize tax rates as well, but for the most part, it's just calling the bonds if they're callable.
Okay.
And so even on the next refunding that we do, if we think we've got some fund balance that we want to apply to that, we could buy down that much principal.
Let's do that when more kids are academically succeeding here.
Well, and these are all INS funds, they can't be transferred anywhere else, as David said, so if you have your MNO tax rate, you have your INS, these can go for nothing other than bond payments. So it's a matter of when you're gonna use them for bond payments. They can't ever be for construction, they can't ever be for to pay salaries, they can't be for anything other than to make debt. So it's just a matter of timing.
These were MNO dollars.
Oh, MNO dollars, okay.
These were MNO dollars.
You can use them. You can use them to pay debt, you just can't use the INS.
I'm sorry, I thought you were saying at the end of the year, if you've got access-
No, we would have, we were favorable at year-end because of, you know, very conservative budgeting and saving money, and then we would decide, what are we gonna do with this? Is it gonna go to fund balance, or is it gonna go against, you know, paying principal down? So I don't think it was maybe, but one or two, maybe 1 million, it wasn't a lot.
Are you talking about the last few years?
No. Long time ago.
We had a different issue. We had, when we went from 27.8 to 26.9, if you remember, we had the discussion, you wouldn't remember, you weren't here, but we had that discussion of what if we don't go from 27.8 to 26.9? That would have left us with, I think, something like $3.8 million. Can't we just pay off principal?
We couldn't do that.
We couldn't. We had to reduce the tax rate in 26.9.
You can only collect what you're obligated to pay.
Right.
But this was a circumstance that was like, it may have been the tooth, I mean, I was elected in '6, so it was right around that time.
But Missy, we have a problem in four years- But Missy, we have a problem four years.
Oh, I know. I'm just trying to understand.
But that's an MNO.
What's okay? What's permissible? And what's not permissible?
That would be permissible if the board approved that.
So can I, on this traditional, the fixed rate versus variable rate, I see that there's recommendations, they're not recommendations, it says the district shall.
It's a plan.
Is that by law, or is that the recommendation of staff?
That we, that are. That we select the most prudent.
That are variable rate debt be no more than 0.20% of portfolio.
That's mostly, the way the rating agencies look at it, if you go any higher than that, it's putting you at risk because you've got the interest rate swing. And so that, what that really does is that if you want to sell variable rate debt and want to keep your rating, if you stay within that range, you probably, you'll be okay. But if you go any higher than that, you're taking a risk. And so it's not required. But it's prudent whenever, and if you ever do a variable rate, or if you do one again, there's, there's steps, or there's rules that you, that you self-regulate, so you won't do more than a certain percent, or the length of them, and the type of, the credit back up on them.
I just, I mean, the lawyer in me comes out when I see the word shall, as being a definitive statement, it cannot be more than that. And so I think in terms of where the rates have been over the last two or three years, had we issued variable rate debt, short-term variable rate debt, we may have been able to have an advantage over the last few years. Now, obviously, by, if we go above 20%, there is a risk to it, which is to our credit rating, but are there some times when that risk is worth taking? And if we have the word shall in here, we can't do that. That's what the regulations say, we cannot.
But who governs this document? You don't need board approval to change it.
I do.
Right. You what?
It's the superintendent.
Correct.
You don't need us.
But, but I'm just saying, if we're, if the superintendent is establishing guidelines in terms of how debt will be, what our debt strategy will be, is the use of definitive statements the right way to go? And I, I mean, I'm asking a question, I'm not saying that.
Yeah, David, if you read the rest of that sentence, then do you think it still forces us, or do you think that those are?
Well, when it says that the variable rate debt within the district's debt portfolio shall be 0 to 20%, it's establishing limits that cannot be exceeded, right? It can only, variable rate can only be 20% of the debt. And you have to weigh the cost-benefit analysis at the time of the risk of your, your rating being harmed versus being able to get a lower rate, because it's variable, for a shorter period of time, and turning that debt faster.
But if it's variable, you know what it is the day you're taking it, you don't know what it is in two, three years down the road.
Absolutely. Yeah, there's a risk of that, but again, historically, if you look at the last two or three years, issuing variable rate debt would have been better than, than issuing the fixed rate debt.
Which is great in hindsight, but he needs to make that decision ahead of.
I understand. But what I'm saying is, we've got an expert who's going to advise us, and so do we want to limit ourselves in this regulation to say it can't be more than 20%? If we were to have an expert who said, you know, yeah, this is a great, great rate atmosphere to try for more available rate. I'm, you know, look, I'm a conservative guy, so I would say the rating is more important. I don't know that I'd want to do that. I'm asking a question as to whether or not you want to be limited by the shall.
What other word would you put?
May.
May.
I mean, a targeted goal may be that it's no more than 20%.
Well, so the guidance that we use to select these two amounts, are they what the threshold would be for standard of course or our booties? Is that why we get that 80/20?
Yes.
I mean, would you tell me, just shut up and then keep it a shall, and we would never go over 20% of variable rate?
You know, you can put it at will, at may, it's fine.
No, but I'm asking your advice, is if we don't go over 20% variable rate, and it's just, it's bad advice, and nobody, no financial advisor would ever advise a district to go over more than 20%, then I'll stand down.
I'm never going to say never. I think, it's a prudent issue, is that you got to remember, if you're doing variable rate, you've got to go ahead, at the first of the year, you're going to have to levy a rate to cover a certain amount. And so the more spread that you have, the more that you do, then you've got to levy more. Like in the case that, when we did your variable rate program, we sold bonds at the same time that had a fixed rate of 3%. And so what, and you're able to do this by law, we levied the bonds as if they were going to be paid at 3%. So we had enough debt to pay in the event it went up to the 3% number. And then if we had money left over, which we did every year, what we did, we called the bonds away. When you also, when you did this, or when we did the debt plan, it said that you won't exceed the 20%. I have no problem whatsoever. I'm, I'm always about flexibility. I don't really, unless it's something foolish, which this absolutely is not, and puts you at a huge risk. Now, the more you get up there, you got to recognize what the risk would be. But having the option and the flexibility of should be, or may be, or whatever, I don't have any problem with at all.
And I, I'm happy with the current language, because essentially what, if we think about the implied, complete sentence, what it says is, you shall not have more than, you should not expose yourself more than 20% to a variable rate unless the supervisor, unless the superintendent says so. So it's not like we don't have a, but we do, we are putting some boundaries, risk aversion boundaries.
Well, that's true. We wouldn't issue that debt without board approval, so it really all still comes back to the board. But putting may in there gives us the opportunity to bring it to you for consideration. Okay.
The only, the only thing I would say is if we're going to change the word to may, I would, I would want to do a little rewording about what is recommended, that it's recommended, that it should not exceed this ma, that, you know, you may, but there needs to be some language in there about what is, what is absolutely recommended, if we're going to make that switch at all, because, you know, I'm, the long-term debt rating of the district is pretty critical to the financial stability of the district. And so I would be really hesitant to go over the parameters that are listed here. Well, that would, of course, we would bring it back to the board, but it's unlikely that Randy and I and the financial advisor would, that's not going to be a common occurrence, for sure. So, I'm hesitant to change it. If we are, I want to keep some really strong language in it, if we change to may.
Okay, we'll work on that.
I actually like the way shall be, I like the current language.
Pardon?
I like the current language, because I think the current language is very specific.
So why don't you guys, we're not taking action on this.
Correct.
We're just talking about it. So that'll give you some time to think about it, process it, and figure out what you want to bring back.
We'll focus on that. Okay, as far as guidelines for refunding debt obligations, in that second sentence, each potential refunding should be considered on its own merit, and shall be analyzed and structured to support the current and future debt programs. And so really, the rest of this goes through the process of what we're looking for as far as when we do a refunding, that the percentage of principal amount of refunding bonds, or, I'm sorry, the present value savings as a percentage of the principal amount of refunding bonds is at least 3%. And so that's a good target, to definitely exceed 3%. And to the extent permitted by law, an advance refunding may be considered in the ratio of negative arbitrage as a percentage of the present value savings. On the principal amount of bonds being refunded does not exceed 50%. Down on B, the final maturity of the refunding bonds shall not exceed the final maturity of the refunded bonds. So we did do that in a couple of situations, but as a practice, we typically want a refund and all that to shorten and to reduce interest, not to extend, unless it's just some measure we need to take for structure. On the next page, a restructuring under B, so I'm on page six, a restructuring may be implemented to permit additional debt obligations, to be sold more cost-effectively, to keep within the tax rate parameters communicated to voters of the district, or to manage the district's INS at a tax, at a tax rate. If our values ever went down significantly, some of our thoughts might have to change, if we're going to try to maintain that 26.9 that I believe we told the voters in the last bond. Also to add flexibility to the district's debt portfolio, given prevailing circumstances. Down in the next section is method of sale to be utilized. The district has used both of these, as far as competitive sale, which is what we normally do on a new issue. And then we typically use the ones that performed well in that competitive, we use those in the negotiated, which are typically, I'm sorry, on the refundings that are typically under the negotiated. In the next section, we talk about parameter debt sales, you're familiar with that, that's where the board authorizes us to begin the process, to sell bonds with a parameter debt, and we can go ahead and authorize those. Next is the credit ratings and credit enhancements, we've talked about that. At the bottom of page eight is the selection of consultants, and I would say all of that has been standard practice for what the district has done. Down under selection of underwriters for negotiated transactions, and so it says the district may select a pool of qualified firms to serve as the senior manager and/or co-manager. The district reserves the right to add or remove firms from the underwriting pool at any time, and to shorten or lengthen the period of time for which the underwriting pool is in place. So basically, we can structure that, that underwriting pool for the competitive, I'm sorry, for the negotiated, however, we need to, but the district has always strongly considered, again, who's performed well under the competitive. And I think that's a good practice to continue. Then on page 11, we just talked about the selection of an underwriter for variable rate debt transactions. And again, we don't currently have any of that variable rate, but this would be the process. We go on the next page to ongoing debt management practices. Basically, this says that as far as any investments that we do with, with debt money, we revert back to our CDA legal and local policy, those are addressed there. Also compliance with federal arbitrage rebate regulations and continuing disclosure requirements. And then we wrap it up with the administration shall review the district's regulation on an annual basis, and review appropriate changes with the superintendent's cabinet, and would have the superintendent make any changes that are recommended. Sorry, that's a, that's a long regulation. I think you can see why we didn't want it all in policy. But again, I think it just firms up what has been good practice here at Plano.
So let me ask, what's the effect on you of this regulation? What if you violate this regulation? And let me ask you the specific question, or what just jogged my thought on this, Randy, one of the things you said is that if you were to reissue bonds, essentially refinance, it can't have a maturity date longer than the original maturity date. But you just, on our slide just a minute ago, we had one, that was that little $300,000 bond, that we refinanced to a longer maturity. Now, the overall cost, maybe the overall cost savings means you refinance that to a longer maturity, but because your rate's lowering so much, you're actually saving money. Well, if the regulation says you can't do that, but it's prudent to do so, will we violate it without what happens then? That's the concern I have with words like shall.
Sure.
Is I don't want somebody to come along later on and say, well, you guys, you just violated your own regulation here.
Right.
Even though, yeah, it makes sense, you saved several thousand dollars to do so, but rules are rules, and you violated them.
But the purpose is to establish responsibilities and guidelines. I don't think it's hard to fast rule.
That's why I'm asking, what's the impact, what's the effect of these regulations?
My understanding is, we, there's a difference between violating the policy that we're approving, because the policy is, next week what comes, not next week in our board meeting, what comes to our approval is really just going to be CCA local, not the regulations. Regulation is really the implementation, that the guidelines, the 12 pages that come out of the page and a half. So as long as CCA local does not get violated, this is not, you asked about Sarah, what's her repercussion? She's not violating CCA local. If the regulation itself, if we want to, or the administration wants to do something against what's in the regulation, that's at her level. She's the one that can approve it or not approve it.
I agree, Yoram. So I think of regulations as my rules of what I have to follow. But Sarah gets to approve the regulation, and so if she wants to, if she wants to override what's in regulation, she has the authority to do so. I just don't have the authority to do so.
I would agree with David on this. And Plano, we're a very rule-bound district, and to actually put something in place that we know we have a good chance of violating, this doesn't make sense, put something as simple as a may, or just a shall, to give you appropriate flexibility. I don't see how we can enforce rules on a figure of children and say, the brush will be.
I just want it to be flexible, for us to be smart with our debt, which is, which, you know, the question I asked earlier today was, did our last bond issue, our reissuance, our last bond issuances in the last few years, have they satisfied these, these regulations? And, you know, Sarah thought that they had. And so I want our practice, if we're going to put rules in place, let's make sure that it's, it's flexible enough that the good practices we've been using of late, you know, we don't accidentally trip ourselves up, that's all I'm saying.
By the way, the, having worked on IEEE standards for a long time, between the shall and the may, there is another word, that if you wanted to make it more flexible, that's the word that you should be using, and the word is should. It should be between 0 and 20, it should be between 80 and 100.
That gives you that recommendation.
Should, should means that this is what you should be doing, but it does not bind you with a shall. May, may is very, very open-ended. May's not even a recommendation, may just says, well, you may do that, 0 to 20.
Well, why don't we, when we go back on, on the, take another look at it, look at all the shals and shall-nots.
Sure, just think through, just think about it.
Look at where they are.
Make sure you're not backing yourself into a corner.
No, we appreciate that.
That's the word choice that, that we need in there.
You know, bottom line is, it's more of a guide than it is a legal, not legal guidance, it's more of just a good practice guide.
This is, you know, Randy, you said that when we started, and actually, what echoes in my head is a statement that Brian made when he first became superintendent here, he said, before you tear a fence, you want to know why it was built. And as you said, we're not going to be here forever, you're not going to be here forever, Sarah's not going to be here forever, there's going to be a next generation and a next generation. And it's our responsibility to give them the guidelines that we think are guidelines of good fiscal responsibility. And as opposed to, well, that's how we've been doing this, and we don't, never put it on writing, in writing, this is what, this is how we do things.
Well, it took me several months of being here before I got up to speed as much as if I would have had this regulation and could have read it one time. I would have known how Plano did all their debt.
Yeah.
Well, this is good.
It's good. We've got two more slides, really quick. So we just put in your packet, so this is a summary of callable debt. So this is what we'll be looking at in the future, as far as our opportunities for refunding and to save additional money. And on the next slide, this is just the years that we have that callable debt. So we do have some in 2019, a pretty significant amount, over 80 million. And then in 2026, which is pretty far out, but we've got 170 million-ish at that point in time, and of course, some smaller amounts along the way. So our financial advisors definitely keep us abreast of when those are coming up, and those don't ever sneak up on it. That and bond underwriters are happy to let us know. We've got something coming up as well.
Yeah, they call us, don't they?
They call us, yes. The Steves and Richards, they give us a call.
Could our bond debt, variable debt be hedged?
Uh, no.
I would suspect not as a public entity, but just curious as we could.
Any other flexibilities you'd like to have?
Well, you've got, you've also got arbitrage regulations or deals you've got to deal with, so you really, there's not really an opportunity to hedge it. Kind of sticky that way.
I went down the bunny trail of this stuff that's callable, if we could refinance what's callable. If we could refinance what's callable into short-term variable rate debt and then hedge the variable rate, there's, if that's, that's where my mind is going.
I'm not, I'm not so sure that you can do that by state statute.
Good thing we have a legislative session coming up.
Because that's the fight that you're going to be.
What did you say you wanted to question?
Because that's the fight he wants to pick.
Oh, right.
We can hedge our.
All right, thank you very much. All right.
Let me, let me just say that I really want to appreciate the work that you've put into this. I know that you had to deal with me quite a few times, but I appreciate the deliverable, the deliverables.
It's a good practice.
All right. Thank you. All right, the last item on our agenda relates to upcoming work session agenda items. And included in your packet are a couple of different materials that in total represent the different items that are either in the plan of work and have a report out in some fashion, our regular board planning calendar, or items on the, are the action tracker items in here too? I thought I saw them online. Yes, on the very back. Yeah. So any comments about these items?
I have a couple of questions. One is, when I looked at the agenda for December 11th, I did not see CCA local there under policies. I presume the plan is to?
Based on the information from tonight, if the board wishes us to bring that policy back, then we'll, we'll put that on the agenda at that time.
Okay. And you also had a report on zero-based budget and budget calendar and policy. What would that be in the December meeting?
Read that again, please.
The item says it's under reports, and it says zero-based budget slash budget calendar slash policy.
Yeah, so we typically bring the budget calendar. We can talk about the zero-based budget at that meeting as well.
Okay.
And who will be doing the zero-based budget?
That's you.
That's me. We'll be hitting that up.
Okay.
But which, I'm sorry, but which departments, which components of the district will be doing zero-based budget?
Okay. And it says policy, is there going to be another policy for us?
There's not. I'm hesitant to change it. That could have been a reference to CC.
But that would not be a report. That would be policies.
Yeah, that'd be under policy.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
I have a couple. Looking at the board communication plan for January, the talks there about the conditions that we're going to have in that board update stacking allocation, to me, that really is your strategy? How you decide to staff, and it would warrant, I think, more than just an update, a written update. I think it would warrant some presentation and discussion. That's where we spend 75% of our budget, and I think it would warrant more of a discussion.
I thought we spent 75% on recapture.
That's part we don't spend on recapture, federal stacking. How you spend your money is where your strategy is. The second question I had in the board action tracker, the conversation about adding the board and 3K hits, 21 not exceeds, and that was not correct.
I'm sorry.
It's not our strategy, I hope, to have 21 3K.
No, and we put those 3K numbers in last week's board update, so you could see how powerful we are.
I just want to make sure that that's accurate. I'd also like to move toward a central discussion of updating our public comment policy in our board policy. We've only had public comment since 2010. That was actually one of the numbers came on the board. And at the time, I think people didn't really want to hear from our constituents, but now we are, we're open. It troubles me when we have people who have to wait hours and hours and hours, particularly when it's students. I felt really bad when the young woman who waited so patiently to talk about the importance of the therapy she's receiving. And so I'd like us to look at saying, we'll allocate up to 15 minutes that we include anyone who needs to talk about an agenda item, but also the non-agenda items within that, the limited time period. If it's more than that, then they can wait to the end. But that would allow some of these young folks to say their piece, to communicate, and then get back to do their studies. Also, I worry a little bit by saying, oh, we'll just pluck out the students, because then other community members could say, oh, we're being unfair. But is that a reasonable time period?
And we've done that in the past.
Yeah, we have to keep it neutral.
Right. So that's where you can say, time. We do all the agenda item votes, and if that doesn't consume 15 minutes, then we will bring forward the non-agenda items. If it's more than that, wait to the end.
Okay, anything else? Thank you. If there's no further business, then we call this meeting adjourned. The time is at 8:19.
Time is dead?